I don't think so, no. So the first application is number one, Marius Nicolaidis, thirty-six Hazelwood Avenue.
I'll be there for the applicant. Before I get into that, I noticed you have Firestar on, which is the sixth application.
Yeah.
But today, we don't have to approve it. How it is that we put over until the second meeting in June?
Okay, so we're gonna hold that. We'll get, when we get to that, we'll hold you over to the twenty-third.
That's fine. All right, you asked for a couple of things. The first thing you asked for was a plan with reference to the access area coming in that Ron had to approve, and I believe he did. Do I believe, do you have everything?
What's in, which one was that, the?
Excuse me?
The Hazel?
Hazelwood, yes.
Yeah, I think it's, I just got the, I just saw it, yeah. They added the drainage calculations.
So you don't have anything approved?
That's, the driveway is fine.
Okay. Next is the issue that was raised at the last meeting with reference to screening. We did submit a plan with reference to the property to the south of us. So I'd like to start moving from there and around to the rest of it. The first part is, we've never had any objection to, to provide screening with reference to the area with a common driveway, with reference to property to the south. And this shows that.
Well, we had a conversation about this at the last meeting.
Yeah, but I have-
Asked us specifically, okay, what we were expecting.
Well, I have given you the, the landscaping plan regarding the property to the south. Okay?
So that's-
Yeah, and this certainly with south. I'm talking about the south, yes.
Okay.
And we'll get into the others.
Okay.
The question I have is, on the property to the south, why am I screening a backyard? It's just, it's a question I have. You know, it's the backyard, the two houses, the driveway, the area that is a- a- accessible. I'm asking you why, why I would have to screen the backyard.
Dick, you know, we went through this at the last meeting, and I thought we were all clear, and you were actually-
No, I wasn't, I wasn't that, I was not that.
You know, if we're gonna play this over and over again, it's all-
Well, we can, maybe. Now, so I'm asking a que, I asked a question then, and I'm asking it again now, why I'm screening a backyard?
Yes. And the neighbors asked, and we're trying to accommodate everybody.
You also asked for a plan with the property behind, the first lot behind. Okay, and I would apologize on that because it's, the plan that was submitted way back when shows that that basically is screened for most of it.
On the way back?
The, the, the plan.
This?
This plan, yes. Just look at it. Now a form of Rosanti.
Okay.
You've noticed that it's, you've selected that it's screened. There's also a vacant lot between Rosanti's and the other property, so I don't know why I would be screening a vacant lot. I didn't pick up on that. I acknowledge I didn't pick up on it. But it was on the plan from the time we started with it.
Okay, so, what do you, what, I guess we were, we asked you to do is put all the landscaping plan on one piece of paper, so that we're not looking at this from the last time, this from the last time, and try to reflect what we discussed at the last meeting.
But I didn't totally agree with everything at the last, when you told me to do it, I told my client to do it, and I'm coming in and saying to you with reference to the lot behind us, a substantial amount of that lot is already screened. I didn't pick up on it. I said, I tell you, I didn't pick up on it when we discussed it last. And between there and the, and the final lot, there's a vacant lot in there. And why would I be screening an area that consists of a vacant lot?
Are you referring to the south side of the vacant to the?
No, no, it's two.
Yep.
The south side of two?
Two, this is lot two. This is screened, showing screening.
We talked about, we talked about the last meeting, screening the north side of two and three.
The north side of both?
Two and three.
That was discussed. Two, two and three was supposed to be screened and not screened.
What I'm saying to you is, this is the plan that was approved, this is the plan from the very beginning, it is screened.
So then we don't have a problem, put it on this, on the site?
It's on the plan, it's on the plan.
Put it on the landscaping.
Hold on. This is existing. Where is the screening that we asked for?
I'm, I'm saying to you, there's a lot in here, which I didn't realize last week going through. This is a vacant lot. This is not owned by Rosanti, this is not owned by these people. Why am I screening a vacant lot? And why am I screening an area that consists of a lot? We have a fence along here.
See, it's telling me that-
I'm saying to you that I think there's so many questions that came up last night, I don't remember.
You're gonna leave a gap for about twenty-five feet on screening.
Excuse me?
You're gonna leave a gap on screening, because, I mean, that's, I mean, that's ridiculous.
Why am I screening a vacant lot?
Because we asked you to, and we're trying to accommodate the neighbors. And that's what we discussed at the last meeting. That's what you agreed to at the last meeting.
I explained to you at the last meeting, I hadn't looked at the plan, because I wasn't expecting that. I said, a lot right behind us, it's already, it's already, it's already screening. And the rest of that, most of that, is a vacant lot, it's not a neighbor's property.
We agreed to discuss this last week.
I know.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, we're wasting our time talking about this.
Yeah.
So that's my position.
Well, the way it works is if the applicant's not willing to offer, we will have to decide whether to condition your approval on that or deny your approval. It's one of those two things.
Michael, we have any thoughts?
Or agree with the applicant, that's, those are the, the choices.
As these things are developed, you gotta face ARB. They're gonna make you put bushes up. I'm gonna tell you that right now, because I've done it. And they make sure the screening is up as part of the plan for the house. I'm just telling you that right out, okay? But we, you know, we should be writing something in it, at least to the ARB.
Well, I think, you know, I think the point is we had discussion.
We did have it, and not really. And, you know, the neighbors made, made their opinion. No, it's, it's a tough one, you know, but-
Does your client know that the condition wouldn't require him to install them immediately, but only as the lots are built?
There was no discussion as to the installation of them. And that was another question I was gonna ask.
Well, we answered that list.
The, the installation of it, when would we put it in?
We told you it wasn't gonna have to be put in right away.
Huh?
We told you it wasn't gonna have to be put in right away.
That's fine. When would it have to be put in?
When you develop the property.
That's, that's fine when you say when you develop it, but at what point, and I'm not trying to-
As a condition of building permit, that was what we talked, a condition of building permit, that's what we talked about.
You want to add that the time of building permit is issued? And what about with reference to the property to the south where the road is? My suggestion is that that be put in at the time the road is put in.
That has to be done with the road.
Because we may not have it, we may not have a building permit right away, we may just be putting the road.
It's equivalent of a, of a, we figure it's equivalent of a road, so it's considered a subdivision. This part is considered a subdivision improvement. So that, when you put in the road, the landscaping is gonna have to go in.
How is it being irrigated?
I'm calling it a road.
On those two lots, that's one hundred forty feet. You put it in when you get the road permit, you call it the road, how is it being irrigated?
Excuse me?
How is it being irrigated, so they don't die?
It's gonna, it's, my client, because when you're putting the road in, the water has to be put in. Utilities, all the utilities have to be put in.
I understand that. It'll be meter, it'll be service, and it'll be water, and it'll be water for the plants. So I'm just asking, I, I just wanna know that you're gonna put it, you're gonna put the plantings in, maybe the right time to put the plantings in is when they can get water. It's all this line itself, but I'm just asking the question, how are you gonna water?
If we put the road in, we would, there, there, there would be water, because when you're putting the road in, you're putting the water into the lot.
When you, when you get-
Oh my god, what came first?
Water service to the house, then you'll be able to water the question. But without, without the service at the house, there's no water, the water of the plants, unless you pull something off the neighbor. I'm just asking an obvious question, like, you're gonna build the road, you're gonna put the plantings in, how are they gonna survive until you actually-
Then we'll put the planting in when we, when we get, go for the building permit.
It may be more prudent, hold on, let me see. It may be more prudent to put the plantings in when you get a permit and you have water, and you can irrigate these plants.
That's fine.
And I'm, I'm just asking a question, not to be argumentative, but I'm just trying to figure out, how are we gonna keep them alive and develop the road first?
Hey, Rocco, we, we have pretty standard conditions that require, whether it's a site plan or a subdivision, landscaping to be maintained, so.
Okay.
It's not-
Meeting a half death.
Yeah, it's not, there's nothing unique about this. We'll deal with it with standard, standard conditions.
I was just asking the question, I didn't hear the answer.
Good.
Replacement is required in our conditions, if, if they die in a year.
Is that replaced?
Yep. If, and if, after a year, there, shrubs like that are growing, they'll go away.
Yeah.
But they have to be, you know, we, we checked up on that.
Okay.
All right, so put it over to waste, and I'll submit the, the site plan for the rest of the, uh-
Landscaping plan.
The landscaping for the rest of it.
Um, anybody from the public wants to confirm this application?
Yeah, of course he does.
Good evening, Jess, good to see you again. Mark Coles, six forty.
Yeah, I'm Tom thirty-four.
Um, obviously, we thought we were gonna see a landscaping plan, despite your work tonight, to check to the level of the dots, to see what we had. So, I think the plan that you outlined is great, we would like to see a plan, we'd like to see it ten days in advance, not five days like we got this one. And, um, I think having it in a, a building permit is the best, is the way to go. We're just concerned that the applicant here doesn't try to slide out and that we end up with the screening that we are looking for. Just a little concern that we don't get that, everything we asked on a time basis, you understand me?
Yes, I'm, I'm glad that you brought up the issue of water and these, and who's gonna take care of them, and what happens when they die, being placed. And also, when you brought up about where the other parts that you asked for screening, um, lot three becomes my fourth neighbor. So I appreciate in the last meeting that you were going to continue the screening all the way down the entire.
Yeah, that's a good, so.
Mm-hmm. I just kept saying that.
Yeah, and, and, and thanks, guys, on our note here that in the minutes, we, Mr. Haege actually said he understood the screening that we were asking for last time, so I don't understand why he doesn't understand now. But, um, we've got the screening plan, we see the screening that, that we mentioned, both sides, lots one, two, three, to the south, lots two, three to the north, will be good. Thank you very much, Jess, appreciate it.
We appreciate you attending the meeting.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to speak on the application? I need a motion to hold the application over until June twenty-third.
Make a motion?
Second. In favor?
All right.
Have a nice memorial day, Mr. Haege.
Excuse me?
Have a nice memorial day.
Thank you.
The next application is eighty-five and one oh five Montauk Highway.
There you go.
Good evening. I'll be after the applicant, make those go off. I think we have the latest plans that were submitted several weeks ago.
Yeah.
We've got some comments from Ron Gill. Um, with this, with all of you, of you, we, we, the building slightly, the, the apartment, um, we cleaned up a few of the things that-
Nick, can you just see if that microphone's on and use it? Thanks. Thanks.
Um, between the, few things on the site that Mr. Hill had asked for specifically with reference to mergers of the properties, and the notes there on potentially the, you know, merged the, the properties legally, it's been, it's not, we do that for us. Um, trying to think what else that was in there, some reads that Mr. Hill had asked for. He recently sent us, sent us something, let's read a few of the comments that we'll address prior to the next meeting. Obviously, we're gonna get that to you guys in time, so. That's on here, just basically to see if we can get on to the zoning business, so that at least we can have, have further discussions to see what's on, what's in there, and what's gonna be about this.
So we still didn't make that Y-Lock Road, um, anything but a service parking area, huh?
Well, that's what we have at our, that's what a refuse area is, so. I think we had discussed not bringing in, you know, connecting from Y-Lock.
Yeah.
Part of the time, so we don't have that, that whole, you know, I'm gonna cut that light and go right through this parking lot, you know, to get out to Oak Street.
You okay with that?
Kind of tight back here, they have, have an alley.
Are we gonna put the outside done? I mean, the sun?
Put the outside done, it extended cave area that I had. A good building.
We're gonna have new?
Separate application. Go back, I trust. Okay, with the other people, because you have dinner, Michael, I'm busy Friday night.
Let's turn it up a little bit, we'll get a little bit nicer. So you're on it? How many times you're gonna have that building get hit first?
Well, I sort of see.
How many times? How's that building get plowed in? Two or, two or three? It's bad with, with bad down around.
I remember two.
Three through the light, bosh, three in the front door.
I remember two.
Yeah.
At least it's outstanding, all right?
Anything you'd like to discuss on this application? All right.
I made up on this last night.
So I'm getting the stare down from Mr. Collins.
I got a couple of questions.
We haven't, we haven't seen each other. So you're looking away. We haven't seen each other in a couple of months.
Yeah, I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting, so.
Neither was I, that's okay, that's all right.
Uh, the area that, that's called paved, what is that?
We extend, we had parking in there, we had a couple of spots in there, so I would do a paving stone in there.
I know, but what's the intention of the use there? It's gonna be outdoor seating?
Possibly it's the outdoor seating? I don't think so, but I just wanted to get the parking off of the building.
No, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Get a little more buffer from there.
It just seems like an awful lot of paving over there.
Would you rather see parking lot?
No, I would rather see some landscape.
I can do some landscape.
Yeah. Instead of more curvous materials, so.
Cool.
The other question, I know there was a comment, how do you get to the front door? I just think, you know, there's a sidewalk along Oak Street, not suggesting anybody go out from the parking lot to there. But I don't think you necessarily need to have this part, the, the length and width of that sidewalk go along, basically parallel to the parking lot. I would think you, you could just, because most people, they get out of the car, they walk into the parking lot, walk towards the building, and you have this large paved area. I would do it from the paved area around the house, instead of doing, I don't know how many feet we have here, it's probably, I don't know, a good two hundred feet of sidewalk here. You know, you could just bring that sidewalk off that rear paved area to go around the front of the building. In front of, on your landscape plan, you have some basically foundation plantings?
Right.
That, on that side, I see you're, you're kinda screening that back paved area there. I think I would just have that come in, and then come around that, instead of having that. And then you can accommodate some more landscaping in front of those parking spaces, that front, that front on, on Oak Street. Because really, that's, you know, what, what we really wanna screen is the parking spaces in that rear parking lot.
I'm okay with that. I know I initiated, I mean, the front door, but-
I get it, yeah.
That's clean.
And then you have a paved parking on the west side, I would extend that out to the sidewalk.
I'm sorry, say it again?
On the west side of the building, you have paved sidewalk?
Yes, okay.
I would extend that out to the sidewalk, so there's some connection there.
You really have to, because that's, that's the only way I can get, personally, to get it.
Yeah.
From that side, right, the outside, okay. We'll bring that around, no problem.
Yeah, just go straight out to the sidewalk on Montauk Avenue. So just back to the paved area and the outdoor seating, obviously, you're maxed out based on parking, so if you have any outdoor seating, it's gonna have to, seasonal outdoor seating, it's gonna have to be removed from inside, or you'd have too much.
I love that. And we can condition that.
Yeah.
I, I think in my later, latest comments, parking numbers didn't drive to seats. I think you had, uh, parking for seven, sixty-six and the seven seats. And another question I had was, what you call on the second floor a service bar looks a lot like a regular bar, but no seats.
Our latest plan shows no bar on that second floor.
It, but it says service in-
It's on the first floor. The service bar on the first floor.
Okay, got you, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we forgot that second floor bar.
But what is that, what is that service area, how is that gonna be used?
Not sure, I might have to ask whoever's gonna be operating, the, the restaurant, so it's gonna, it's not gonna be a, a bar bar, but I'm sure it's gonna be the takeout, if you want to remove the takeout, um, but I, I'll-
On that one, of course, there can't be seats there.
Yeah, of course.
I guess Kyle and I were just talking, and I was wondering about the, uh, behind the restaurant. There doesn't seem to be a, a way out. Kyle was, I was discussing whether those, those windows go all the way to the floor, so they, so they can be opened up, or?
These two, Nick, on the, uh, the south elevation closest to Oak, it had, they almost look like overhead doors.
Yeah, it's much like my floor.
And it does say windows, doors, metal, black metal storefront.
The south elevation, so those windows there, we do have an exterior door here.
Well, yeah, but it's, it's tied into the storage area?
No, no, it went all the way over to your-
No, I see this one.
Okay.
But this clearly says windows and doors, metal frame, storefront.
Yeah, they're not gonna be, so they're gonna be storefront, they're fixed windows.
They're fixed windows?
Yeah, and those will not be overhead doors.
Thank, thank, on the first floor plan. Either it's, it's not, it's not, on the first floor plan, there isn't a door indicated there. It's, it's, you're looking at first floor plan, it's not indicated the door.
Well, my first, on my first floor plan, I'm showing a door, an exit door here.
What's the date on that, because this one doesn't show?
Here, should be looking at the name now.
Yes. Whatever I submit for the name, that's okay.
Should be not, should be not shown.
Ah, okay, so it's just, okay, so, it should be a door, it's either not gonna be overhead door by all, that will be a door, that's an exterior door, that'll be an exit door.
Yeah.
It shows as a one.
This is from January.
I didn't have, that's the one, that's that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, always service, the one that was here was taken out.
Took it out.
Yeah.
I got you. It's meant to be an exit door, that, it has to have another reason.
As far as it's concerned, it's-
What is the ZDA?
Tell me when I go to the ZDA.
Yeah, the last time, you wanted him to come back.
Right.
Before you had a comfort level to settle, it's only worth, so. If you feel like you have a comfort level, the next step would be Brad would identify the barriers and then he'd remove the road.
Michael?
Doesn't stop you from the continuing site plan.
Yeah.
Like, you can still keep reviewing the site plan elements that Kyle already used and run, but at least let them go to the zoning board, because that's a, just a couple of months.
Yeah, just, we'll, we'll summarize the board, just the setbacks, the structure of the corner for the new building, and then the transitional front yard, we have that, usually landscape area, no buildings, what have you, so.
No, we know they're married now, I'll be over there.
Well, make sure the party calculations, John.
I'll work those.
Yeah.
And then one other question I have, I mean, that's just a recommendation, that is buffer, if we residential and business, it should be anywhere between ten, thirty feet, obviously, thirty. I don't know if you want to just write that in as a reference point, or how we should, I'm asking for a point right now for the most part.
Yeah, but that's, isn't that the, the-
That's the planning boards.
I said, the planning board, just to decide that, you don't need a barrier, it's okay.
Because you don't go less than ten feet.
So we have no objection to going through the ZDA?
I'll let it go. Hopefully, I get that application to be on here July here. So I'll just, I'll just, it'll be July. Seems like it's quieter meeting.
So I guess, I mean, we'll hold you over until June twenty-third right now.
All right, I'll make all these other changes that Ron and Kyle are asking for, get those back into here, go back to what they've, I've made those changes with the application of the ZDA. And I thank you for finally giving fifteen seconds.
Thank you, it's a nice looking plan. Okay, I need a motion to hold the application over until June twenty-third.
Make a motion.
All in favor?
The next application is number three, West Hampton in LLC forty-three Main Street.
The applicant comes in, you know, three two three, Melrose, West Hampton Beach. Good evening. Um, we still have some technical work to do here, I think, but I think we reached somewhat of a milestone. Um, I've submitted the site plan as well as some renderings, which I think reflect everybody's understanding of what this building is, where this building will be located, and what this building will look like. I'm not sure we've provided enough technical detail yet for Brad and Ron, Congress to review in detail, but we're working on it, but I definitely want to come to you and introduce this information. Do you get any initial questions?
It's pretty effective.
It is, and stuff.
It's like out of that old bag.
Yeah.
Is there any chance another elevation looking from the Mitchell?
Uh, this is the only one we, yeah, we're prepared to just look. Try to get one for you, but it-
I'm real interested in Mitchell.
Okay.
A big improvement from the last, from where this started.
Oh, yeah, we have.
This, this is an incredible, we're building.
Yeah.
I appreciate the, uh, input.
I look at the old stuff, and it just doesn't even compare.
I appreciate the input that the board and professionals have provided.
Going to your client.
And, uh, we're, uh, I will do that. I guess in the final throws, at the moment, I would, guess I would just ask that it adjourns on the second meeting in June. We'll see if more information is available by then, and what to expect as well.
We'll talk to it. I need a motion to hold the application over, the applicant's request until June twenty-third.
Uh, I need the motion.
That, all in favor?
Okay, so the next application is Prime Storage ninety-eight Depot, they're held over to June ninth, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, the next application's fifty-five and fifty-nine Old Riverhead Road, they're also held over to June ninth, twenty-twenty-two. The next application is number six, Firestar Holdings fourteen Rogers. Dick just requested that we hold it over to June twenty-third, so can I please have a motion?
I need a motion. Second.
Can I have a motion? Nobody made the motion, did you make the motion?
No, I made, I made motion.
Okay. And who seconded?
I did.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, so the next application is number seven, WHBH Real Estate LLC seven Beach Lane.
For the applicant? James Andrew, three two three Melrose, West Hampton Beach. Good evening. I think the only outstanding issue we have here is a health partner permit.
Oh.
Provide.
That was what happened on your hat.
Yeah. So, um, I don't know if there's anything else that needs to be done, other than schedule it for a resolution?
Well, one question, was this the one, we had the question about the exit, like how it was gonna be handled?
Yes, we submitted a, a grass paper turnaround.
That, that's all worked out?
Yeah, all worked out.
Great.
Yeah.
Terrific.
I think we're, we're good, so. I need to- We can take up any comments on the application?
I don't need any comments.
No, I think it's all solved with that turnaround.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to be heard on this application?
Hey, your next door neighbor, happy evening.
Well, he stopped coming.
Yeah.
Oh, we're good, so. Oh, boy. So, um, I don't see any reason why we can't advance, close the-
Leave it open just in case, because sometimes when I go through it, I find something that's something dissing, I need to ask Jim to add it to the record, so we'll shoot for a decision over the next meeting, but, just in case.
So we're gonna hold you over to June ninth? I need a motion to hold the application over, and then anticipation of decision to June ninth.
I need the motion.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
And then Jim, can you just give us the, that board a health approval tomorrow, not tonight?
Right now?
No, I'll lose it, thank you.
You need one copy or you need more?
One is good.
Okay.
Uh, so the next application is number eight, WHB Development Partners LLC one oh-seven Old Riverhead Road.
Uh, that one, oh, excuse me, sorry. James Anhume three-two-three, Mill Road, West Hampton Beach, we're in the process of modifying the plan based on the comments that we've received from the professionals, and if we could get the, the June ninth, hopefully we'll get something needed for then.
I need a motion to hold the application over if the applicant's request is to June ninth?
Can I make a motion?
Second, all in favor?
All right.
The next one is number nine, Hampton Synagogue thirteen fifteen Brook Road, they'd like to be held over to June ninth.
I need a motion?
Will I make a motion?
Second, all in favor?
All right.
The next application is number ten, PGJG Holding Corp, they'd like to be held over to June ninth.
Need a motion?
I need some motions, can I get?
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, the next application is number eleven, West Hampton Equity Group LLC twelve twenty-two eighty Montauk Highway, eleven Old Riverhead Road.
For the applicant, James Anhume three-two-three, Mill Road, West Hampton Beach, some of our professionals with us, principals with us tonight as well. But since we're not, we're not, we're not done this at the moment, but happy to engage in conversation.
Yeah.
The, um, pamphlet you gave us, I guess, this week, just doesn't have any substantial.
No, I think those are the, the last thing I've provided was the elevations for the different buildings.
I notice we've added, um, basements windows.
Sorry, there are unfinished basements.
Does look like these windows.
Now we have the app, I put a meeting.
Only at least one.
I think only if.
Only if they intended it is habitable, which would not intend.
That changed in twenty sixteen, all basements need a degressment, uh, unfinished road.
I don't trust anyone.
I think the concept being while your, if the building's under construction, it's much easier to design foundation with a degress well versus they finish the basement later on, it's less safe.
Well, I mean, if it's unfinished basement, then it won't be used for occupancy.
Our code requires covenants to be filed that they never finish up. We've been able to enforce that on the developments that happened after two thousand and eight.
And I thought we had discussed that, agreed to that, but we didn't.
I haven't seen the, I didn't notice.
Oh, that's fine.
So, um. John, I don't know that I ever got a, a response to my comments, I know the plans have changed. To kind of agree with my comments, but I don't think I ever saw a response.
A written response?
Written response. Have we gotten the, we have, I know Dropbox plans was, have we ever seen, have we ever got copies of the plans edited?
Um, so, yeah, we do have those, but I think me and Brian kind of made an executive decision, right? We were just told that, we didn't know where to go with them.
Yeah, there were bigger issues to provide than.
Yeah, the plans, but we do have them.
Yeah, Ron, we, you had, there's hard copies there, they addressed your comments, we kind of held off after the last meeting, proceeding the structure, which is really more over here for today.
Did, did VHB ever submit a response, graphic response?
Did our plan, our plan was modified from the match what.
I know that, but I, I think he, uh, needed a, a letter of response, it could be simple.
All right, that's, I'll, I'll get him to write one, but again, that's.
Yeah, okay.
That may be moved depending on what else happens, I don't know.
I don't believe we're prepared this evening to go any further with the secret decision. I beg your pardon.
See if there's comments from the public, anybody here to, probably the next step.
And arranging meet on this. Um, would anybody from the public like to speak on this application? Yes, I would. You hear what happens.
Rob can come back in.
All right, I'm gonna ask for a motion to hold the application over June ninth to reexamine the secret process and make a fine decision on how we're going to proceed.
If I, if it, comment, and I've, I've repeated several times that some of the things that I think are correct, but, um, it seems to me that, um, though all parties' interests could be served in a, in a way that's a little less complicated, uh, than a full-blown, uh, day, um, uh, scoping session, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, we understand that there are options that you are in a position to tell us to study, even if you recognize the existence of the current, uh, uh, secret determination and results area, and certainly seek to modify that if you determine there's something incredible that you can study. Seems to me from the comments over the past couple of months, that one of your concerns is, uh, public input, public comment, uh, on this process. It would seem to me that although from, um, my perspective, the regulations, uh, look to you to identify those new areas, uh, it also seems to me that you could use any, uh, instrument at your disposal to identify what those are, and look to your consultation with the professionals and, uh, perhaps, uh, having a, uh, a public session to invite those kind of comments, but then lead the opening decision with you to seek to modify the secret if necessary, as opposed to putting us in a position to start all over.
So I, I, I've given that some thought, and I, I've done this briefly. Really.
Yeah.
Um, but rather than one meeting, you know, my thought was perhaps two or three, okay, so that we accommodate all of the public comments as possible, right? And then finally to that secret.
The only thing I would say against the notification, that is, let's do the first one, see who shows up.
See if anybody shows up.
See if anybody shows up.
Did anybody show up?
Right, so, you know, I, I don't know that it's worth setting three sessions.
You could have a party, but nobody shows up for the party, no reason to have a second.
So, that's.
All right, well, yeah, certainly, I, I think we're all.
Then what we can do is sort of do a, a, a notice, I get on the website.
Yeah, so that's what we could, we, what we should, right, we should decide on the exact dates of the meetings that we're gonna allow for, maybe we'll do two, and allow for public comment. Um, and then we, that's it though, then, you know, Ms. Smalley, are you, are, so this is the plan, we're gonna do two public meetings, and your residents at Patio Gardens, that's their opportunity, they can write in, they could come, and that's where we're gonna, we're gonna get, we're gonna put it all out there on those two meetings, so i- is it, we're gonna put it on the website, we're gonna put the dates on the website, we can run it in the paper also, but we're not gonna have two meetings, and then they're gonna come on the third meeting and say, oh, we didn't get a chance to come to the two meetings, so if there are people in your development that are interested, these are gonna be their two opportunities to come and say how they feel and, and start bringing up their, their comments, if they don't come.
And how soon will those meetings be over?
We're gonna decide them, we're gonna do one, I think, June ninth and June twenty-third, it'll be the next two meetings. And then, um, you know, I mean, Jim, are you okay with those two dates? Okay, and we're.
Public hearing meetings?
Yeah, but those are gonna be their opportunity, they can put something in writing between Ju- now and June twenty-third, they can come on June ninth or June twenty-third, it's gonna be on the website. Um, I'm gonna trust that you'll tell everybody, and we will, I can run it in the paper, I'm gonna run it in the paper once, in the Southampton Press. And that's gonna be their opportunity to, to come in and talk about what they feel, but we're not gonna, I mean.
Point is that we're trying to identify impacts that don't necessarily get covered during a degress. Um, the secret process gives us two options, a degress and a negate. This application had previously, the application that preceded this one had a negate.
And what is?
And that meant that there were no unidentified impacts that would prevent us from moving forward with the project. That was the last application, this application, we're reserving the decision on either degressing or negating. The secret application.
You're saying pause or neg what?
Declaration.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
When I hear dead.
And I think the opportunity we're giving is for the community to establish possible impacts that we're unaware of, okay?
The concerns for the community, I think, now are the density of the project and the traffic. Because the traffic study that was done, it was out of date as far as members of my community feel because of the, it was done in the winter.
Before you engage in the conversation, I appreciate you coming up with the microphone, and let's, let's finish that. I think we, we've identified the concerns as far as traffic goes, and respond to that, I mean, Jim, we have, we have, we have a current traffic study.
From twenty twenty.
Our experts have examined that traffic.
Or, or. Twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one?
I think we have twenty twenty-four updated, if I'm not mistaken.
It was just updated, yeah.
Yeah.
So they came out and reran all the lines on the road?
Of course, there's so much activity here, a lot of reports, one, and.
They use, they use data from the last.
There are some very good traffic studies that have been done recently, and theirs has been updated to the twenty twenty.
Because of, with the Gidney, uh, being at the train station now, and the summer Gidney and train schedules.
We're aware of that, and our experts have examined that as well, but we're interested in hearing other impacts that we need to proceed, we're aware of the traffic situation. We're not knowing that there's still need to be a traffic impact, but does that raise the application to the level where we have to take, or we have to extend it by putting a positive declaration on the secret, okay? This board isn't convinced that that's necessary, or that that's a path we choose to go, it was the decision process, and we are asking the community and seeking their advice on this.
Now, this, um, will also require a special exception.
Absolutely.
And is that a whole separate public hearing?
That's with the trustees, and as I've told you previous, that's really where you get your bankroll. This board has very little control over the way this application is going to proceed, because the trustees draw that process of special exception.
All right, great, thank you, I will alert my community, and as most of them are back in Florida, I'll probably go, thank you.
Thank you, man. Anybody else wish to speak on this?
Mr. Jerich, if we're gonna do this for the public hearing, I would suggest that we make the, the latest plans available. We make sure the traffic study that was submitted was recently by then, my comments on it, and hopefully you get a response into those, so it's all there.
Totally agree with that.
We gotta make sure everything that's latest and up to date, so the public looks at it, it's there.
Right.
So why don't we, why don't we give you another meeting? And we'll, we'll, we'll get something in next week, we'll get you a set, a full set of everything that you need, clean, new, next week.
If you, if you send that to us next week and then bring a hard copy for the office, but like we did with Rogers, if you wanna email me a set, a Dropbox, and then I'll put a set, Ms. Smalley, on the website, um, in, you'll see on the website, there's a Rogers Avenue section, I'll label it uh, Depot Road, Montauk Highway, or Patio Gardens, I think, and if Brian, Brian, we did it last time, and we'll just put it on the website, also, there'll be hard copies in the office, and everybody has, they can come in nine to four, you don't need an appointment, you don't need any of this stuff, you just come in and you can look at it, and then maybe we'll figure out for the meeting or whatever, we'll get it on the screen also, but if, yeah, if you talk to me, we'll figure it out.
Um, as I have indicated in the past, anybody has any questions at all, that I can help them with, my office is just up the street. Uh, the principals have also offered, if anybody or any groups of anybody would like to meet in an informal way, we're happy to sit down and talk.
You heard that, eh? Okay.
Welcome to that, we look forward to this.
Thank you.
Need a motion to hold the application over, so, June ninth? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, so the next application is number twelve, George Vickers twenty-five and twenty-seven Hazelwood Avenue, we need a motion to hold that over to June ninth.
I need a motion?
I make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Okay, so the next application is thirteen, Robert Schellenthal twenty-two Bayfield Lane, um, Dick was here, but he left, so I guess we'll hold that one over to Ju- June ninth.
Need a motion?
Oh, Joan.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joan.
You know what, she should be able to speak.
Yeah.
Please, she's here.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. At, at what, at what point in this process do I address the entire landscaping of the property? I mean, does it keep going and then I do that in ARB, or is that done here?
Well, actually both.
Okay.
Okay, um, we're going to examine it first and then give them a referral to ARB.
Okay.
But what we, the ARB should be complete, and basically we're just looking for a rough start from ARB, and try to could hold the decision-making process, other than an approval and recommendation from the ARB. But knowing the decisions reside with the plan.
But if you have a specific request, you should make it, maybe put it in writing so that the people who should see it before the next meeting. Uh, because if you were here earlier, you would have heard him arguing about landscapes.
Yeah, yes, I was.
On a different application, so, uh, if a conversation is to be had about that, start the conversation, this is impossible. So, put if.
As soon as I can, um.
You need to make a request, essentially, that the board considers a problem, so if you can think about that and put it together, whatever your request is, at least it could start the conversation.
Ab- absolutely. I would just like to make one other comment. Can I make one other statement to deal with this? These meetings are really terrific, I have learned so much. And I'm excited about a lot of the stuff that's happening.
Yeah, do you hear that?
I really, 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 I mean, you, you guys are really professional, and I'm not just patting you on the back so I get my way. But you'll see me every month or whatever.
Good to see you, Joan.
All right, so I just need a motion to hold number thirty.
Motion?
I make a motion, second.
Thank you, what? Uh, number, the next application is number fourteen, two thirteen Dune Road, they'd like to be held over to June ninth.
I need a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, so the next application is number fifteen, Michael Nobleetti eight Still Waters Lane, it's an application for Phil. Okay, so the next application is number fifteen, Michael Nobleetti, eight Still Waters Lane, it's an application for Phil.
Yes, the application is for the, uh, purpose of Eddie Phil to, uh, earn a regular salary. By this portion of property with, uh, by the name of Phil, in order to limit it on the groundwater runoff. And also to fill some perimeter berms in order to, uh, uh, manage some drainage increase. And also to correct any runoff that he here in the area of the property, which then to access retention area. This portion of property, you see that latest version of, uh, uh, the site plan. Uh, Mr. Hill had made some recommendations when you incorporated the latest plan revision three. That has some, uh, percolation areas in the east one, which will then permit any runoff to come and be retained in that area. And then percolate down and thereby not having any runoff on the future properties.
It's good. Michael, you have any comments?
As long as it's good with Ron. Let's go, we go, we go.
So, um, we'll hold you over to June ninth in anticipation of.
That's okay. Uh, I live next door, I'd like to comment on this.
One moment, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nobleetti. I'm sorry.
My name is Paul Khan, sorry. Uh, I live at number, uh, six Still Waters Lane, next door there. And my property is adjacent and I'm nearing, uh, the completion of the project that you guys approved. And I waited a tremendous amount of time for, uh, doing the fill permits and whatever, great expense. Um, I had to put perimeter drains around the whole property like you guys requested and do everything according to the book that you guys told me to do. Um, I was under the impression that when you brought Phil into your property, you had to get a fill permit before you brought it in. Right? That's what my landscaper architect, Dr. Dragonbite told me and that's what the.
That's true.
That's a truth, right? And you had to show a plan of how the water was leaving the property, correct? Thank you, okay, so I just wanted to bring that up. So I had a tremendous amount of, uh, water over the past years, I've lived there for seventeen years and finally was able to get the property and the plans to be able to afford to do it. And this is, this is, that's a picture of how it looks now, we, um, there was a tremendous amount of, of water that came onto our property from the adjacent properties as well. So I had to improve the drainage. I'm a number six, so. I'm here.
You're on the side.
Yeah, I'm on the side. Um, so, the, the plan that I see on his plan, that he, he just has a vector drain in the back. I put perimeter drains across the whole area. Uh, and it concerns me because the fill has already been brought into the property and was already done. It's not an application for fill, it's already been done. And when I saw the fill be coming in, I called the building inspector, right, many times, and they said this has, there's no permit. But we're gonna let him put it down to five or six truckloads of dirt, we're gonna let him do it, put the fill down. And that's it, stop work order. Next day, another seven or eight truckloads of dirt come in, I call back and they go, we're coming down, it's gonna be a stop work order. He's not to, to finish this job, and yet, he was allowed to use the job. The thing I have a problem with is, I went by the rules, I did everything correctly, paid a tremendous amount of money to do this. I could've got my landscape in the middle of the night, truckload of dirt and just fix the property and raise it and move on, right? But I did it properly. So, there's water runoff into my property, and I'm concerned that one little vector drain down the back is gonna cause water to run onto my property. I think that I had to do perimeter drains around the outside of the property that he should have to do. Along the edge of my property. Because I don't want any water coming from his property onto my, you guys haven't seen it, but his property's up here because every year he adds fill. And it's even banked like that, that water's going somewhere, there's not berms, there's nonsense. I don't care what that says, if you come and take a look, it's not by the book. And, I mean, it's not by.
Have you been on site?
Yeah, we were there last week, uh, we've had like three or four plans since we've been there.
It was about halfway. It's all, it's all completed. I, I looked over the fence when the guy was doing it, Carter was there with the bulldozers, and I said, what's going on? He goes, oh, we're doing top dressing. I go, this is not top dressing, there's a bulldozer on the property, you got seven mounds of dirt. Next day, same thing.
I don't think Mr. Nobleetti needs to be charged on by this board and all that, um, our building inspector and our engineer have been on site.
It's not, it's not completed.
I mean, I think your neighbors made a point that you probably progressed further than you should by law, and frankly, it was surprising, Mr. Nobleetti.
Yeah, okay.
It started after, after planting vegetation and digging over our back and.
No, listen. Let's be fair and let's be honest.
Interrupt, please.
Let's not, let's be honest, because I looked over when the guy was there with the bulldozers. Yeah. I looked over the fence, the bulldozer was there, I called the guy over, he said, oh, Mike's up in the house, I'm just, I'm just doing what he told me. And I called the building inspector office four times. The guy came over and he goes, wait, there's another bulldozer there? I go, yeah, there's another bulldozer there, he goes, he's not supposed to be there. Came down, he was allowed to finish it, next morning, same thing. So, all I'm saying is, I went by the rules, I've been here seventeen years, love the town, love the way you guys operate. But when somebody keeps looking at stuff that I'm doing to make sure that I follow the rules every five minutes, coming over to see everything's going okay and who's doing it, and then you go and do whatever you want, that's not, that's not, that's a little dodgy in my view.
So, just so the board can swear. I, I agree it started and way too much got done without rules would not happen. There was a point though, where knowing that this was gonna be a bit of a drawn-out process, where I thought we might not wanna look at a month date for the whole May and June draw, so it was allowed to do the topping and throw the grass down. There is still a decent amount of build that's supposed to come in, but there's a lot more drainage that's still identified by Ron and myself that he's going and wasn't installed. So that, the grass that's starting to come out now is all gonna be torn up again as he brings the trucks back in. There's about half the amount of work that's still left, but we weren't satisfied with the, the original plan. So we've made recommendations, just, the applicant has made a couple of revisions back and forth with, with Ron has reviewed. So, we, we're not discounting anything, you say your, your account of it, we're not talking about it. But the completing portion, it's an, it's a mediary cleaning, just, we should just so we don't have to look at, you know, a month.
Let me ask you a question, if I hadn't complained, would we be having this discussion now, or would it just be okay?
No, it would never be okay. No, we, we just wouldn't have known about it, if no one, if we drove down and saw it.
You would have known, because I called numerous times, and I said, why aren't there drains going along the side of my property? I mean, I spent sixty, seventy thousand dollars on drainage. I didn't just get a guy to dig a hole and put a, whatever at the end of the property, I did it properly for my neighbors so that they would not get any of the runoff from my property.
But this board has to look at a plan, we can't go back in time. But just rest assured, whatever's been done already, it still has to go through this process of approval. It doesn't mean what was done is gonna stay exactly as it is right now.
With Ron.
Yeah.
Um, I really can't tell, I mean, we're, we're looking at this, but you really can't tell what it looks like, there's really no total information.
You guys probably don't have the latest plan that he brought in today either.
It's more topical, but it's basically it's berm down all sides. So it's the bulk of the property, the bulk of the runoff. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the drawing, but it really doesn't, doesn't tell me.
But Rocko, the drawing you're looking at, isn't the one that Ron had him revise? He revised it and he brought it, Mike brought it in later today.
No, I'm not looking at, this is worthless.
Right.
You see the blue, uh, the lines.
They don't, they don't have your plan, Mike, you brought it in later today. Ron has it.
Yeah.
Well, I think from this board's standpoint, getting a copy of the firm convention. Do we have that?
Mm-hmm.
If you can make any advances.
You know, Ron, the only, I guess, the only comment that I have is that without, without total information, I can't really know. Spot, these five elevations, they really don't mean anything. There's no total information, so you can't really draw, or at least I can't draw any conclusion from this. You've seen it, so it's a different story. Yeah, while that and, and what he's doing is he's berming along the perimeter.
Along his neighbor's property.
Well, so you can take ten feet in, ten feet in is a berm, a slight berm. But the water that's in the center of the property all has to flow down to where those green drainage, greenness, drainage swells to the bottom of the corners. But if you look, if you look at it, we didn't think that was enough. So you look along the side and you'll see two greens. Yeah, I see, I see the, I see the greens. And what we told him is to, to dig that out, drink some debog in, in, you know, several, several areas. And then I told him I want that, that south property line filled up with clean sand to match the neighbor's grade. But, you know, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. Without, I mean, without some type of total information, you can't, I mean, I understand what you said a hundred percent. You can't really tell from this, you know, this piece of paper, what property profile it is.
On this piece of paper.
I mean, this is not, I mean, I mean realistically, this is not an engineer's drawing. No, it's not an engineer's drawing. Well, that's what I mean, it's missing all the information. So, you know, I understand what he's saying, I hear what you're saying, and what you're saying, it, it makes sense, but there's no, there's no elevations here to support it.
And I guess another question would be, if he had to do something, why isn't he here?
Yeah.
Well, he is, he has, he has to put in those drainage wells. Right, but with, we had a proper design drawing, we could make, we could look at it and say, okay, you know, we have five point fifty-two over here, you have four point forty-one, you have positive drainage, right? You got, you got a total, your property has a total.
He, uh, at some point, I, uh, I forgot your name, sorry.
Paul.
Paul's designer came in with perimeter drains, but his, his design wasn't total lines either, it was, I'm gonna raise this six inches, this eight inches, this is gonna be a drain there.
A lot of it is, is.
It's not always.
Contour lines are generally two feet, and a lot of this is happening in, in. With a regular survey, we'd have, we'd have elevations just from a regular survey around the property. You know, getting profit corners, you know, some, some. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't see anything. All I see is, you know, this, to me, this is worthless information, I can't make any decisions.
Can I explain it to you?
There's nothing to explain, I need to see, I need to see.
So, yeah, so pretty much all I want is, if I had to do it and I followed the rules, then he should have to do it and follow the rules.
Well, he will follow the rules and he will not have.
Any water coming out.
Any water coming out.
Beautiful, that's all I want.
The point that I'm making is without.
Yeah.
Without, without elevation data, you can't really tell what's going on.
Yeah.
Thank you, you understand.
You know, yeah, thank you very much, appreciate it.
We appreciate you coming.
There's no more meat, I don't know, do I come back or what's all good?
You don't have to come back.
Beautiful. Have a great Memorial Day, thank you for your time.
Likewise, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah. The site plan was done with specific spot elevation for the Roman plan. And also the.
You don't have the current one.
Not the current one, 'cause he brought, he brought it in late today, so I didn't give it to anybody, I gave it to Ron because if I give you, you guys would have had nine plans by now, because they keep changing them and changing them and changing them.
The, the proposed plan, the proposed elevations, you see on the plan there now in front of you, the original plan, does show specific spot elevations. And from that you would conclude that from the higher spot elevation to the lower is the flow. You also see the, uh, blue, uh, squarely flow lines that show the direction of the flow of the water above ground going to the lower point. So in lieu of putting contour lines on this, these spot elevations, uh, provide that information showing that the water's gonna go from the higher point to the lower point, okay?
Well, we understand that, but we've got berms there, doesn't the berm.
The berm prevents it from going north, south, east and west. And you can see that those lines, uh, the flow lines are coming into the center of the property, alright? Within which we did add the feature of the, uh, the debog and cook with sand in order to have percolation. And the runoff orders on the site are gonna come to the interior of the property and percolate down into the property.
I understand what you're saying about the flow lines, but without elevation data, you know, I, I can't make heads or tails.
Okay, but the square boxes on the left and the right of the, uh.
Yeah, they say something, squiggly lines.
No, the elevations themselves are on the, on the property, showing the spot elevation with the black arrow.
Listen, I do this professionally, every day. And I'm looking at this and I can't make any decision about what's going on.
Well, can't you just say the berms around the perimeter of the property are higher than the interior of the property and any runoff?
Are they higher than the neighbor's property?
Ron, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. You know, I'm, I'm looking, I, I understand what the squiggly lines are, because listen, they're in all the parking lots when you're showing flow direction. And it's common, but there's no other elevations anywhere that anybody's inside. What? Point elevations, and the problem with the point elevator, if you, if you look, the point elevator is less than a foot difference. Contour lines are generally two feet. If you know, there's no, you don't even have any lot line, there's no lot line elevations to even say, okay, this is here, this is where we are. Alright, and this is where you wanna go.
Well, the, it, it's not atypical for this Still Waters area where it's four to five feet above sea level and groundwater's at two feet.
Right.
And we don't have contour lines, there are, it's where I'm gonna raise it six to eight inches to ten inches to twelve inches. A lot of the plans in this area are kind of similar.
If you had some spot elevations around the property, you know what we're starting with.
Yeah.
What do we wanna do with these berms? At least, you know, you can see what he's doing.
I don't wanna speak for the applicant, but I think he transited based off of his first four elevation, so that he got all these spots all around the door.
Yeah, listen.
And then they stuck, they put the, we were at the site, so they had spikes in, stakes in with tape on it to delineate where these spot elevations would be met.
Alright, well.
It's a little atypical, I understand, but, but drawing the lines on the, on the plan, would it?
No, you know, instead of doing, since you're looking at maybe two foot toe hole or even one foot toe hole, it might be too flat. But total lines didn't tell anything, but then spot elevations can give you the information. But you know something, instead of beating this thing up, Ron, you guys are looking at it. I mean, uh, I, I don't know what anybody else thinks about it, but. I mean, what are we gonna get on the next door neighbor's property? After this is done? Okay.
After this is. Well, what about these berms, they're higher than the neighbor's property, aren't you gonna have runoff going off of the berm, not just in the flow direction? Where we see arms?
Often there is, well, typically, the elevation comes down towards the, uh, down to the adjacent property, in this case, Mike's berming up. And I'm, we're not talking about giant bums, we're talking about what, eighteen inches?
Yes, five foot and a half.
And there, these berm, the top of these berms are about ten feet away from the property line. What's the purpose of berms anyway? He wanted to, Mike wanted to contain the water in the majority of the property.
And, and also, and also to plant, the brown trees, we had to have that eighteen inches above groundwater in order to plant, uh, so everybody.
Well, that's a different story, if berms for plantings is a different discussion. Right now, you don't need berms to control the water.
Absolutely we do, in our, in our scenario.
Well, I would know more. There are, there are, there are other ways to control.
New York State berms. Well, can I show you an example here, Ron? New York State blew a book for stormwater runoff, I'm pretty familiar with this. This is an example of containment by means of a berm around the property. Similar to what we had here, having a turf area inside, water runs into the interior of the property as we have in this case.
I know.
Will percolate down through what Ron had suggested was percolating, yes, added, right, yes.
Well, actually, it was, that was added four or five days ago. There were other minor things added.
Does he need berms to control water?
No.
But that's, that's exactly my point, but I can't even tell that from this drawing.
In this case, it does, but it's, it's part of how he's controlling water, but he doesn't need them to control water.
Right, I, I didn't think so.
How do you feel about extending the debog and sand fill area along that neighbor's property, the full length of your berm? How do you feel about that?
There was a priority to be a large swamp maple tree there, uh, that has low branches that can excavate. We have trouble getting underneath to get there. Uh, it's, we already have some trees there on the property line. The backhoe can reach, as we've shown on the green on the south property line, a certain distance up to trench, debog and fill with sand. But to, uh, attack that area to dig from the north is gonna be impossible for the backhoe to get in there because of the trees that already exist.
But I think, well, that's an area where we'll push some sin, clean sand up.
Yes, we could, we could deposit sand.
We're gonna level, between the berm and the other property line, there is an existing swale. It's a mud.
It's kind of some storage.
Well, it's, 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 it's just a lot of mud. We're gonna dig out a large portion of that down to sand so we have, we have percolation. And then we're gonna fill up those, those holes we're punching. And then we're gonna level the whole thing out with clean sand along the neighbor's property.
You're a drink.
So, it's, so it's all kind of le, leveled with this property. So, when he looks across, he's gonna sit, he's gonna have his stone, which is very nice. He's done a, he's done a great job. And then he'll have the fist fence and then there'll be Mike's sand along his foot of the berm.
You're basically running the job.
That, that sounds like the way.
I mean, this type of system is also used at number four Still Waters, okay, who has no perimeter drains. But that system of the, uh, percolating through, uh, debogging, filling with sand, has been a method that was accepted for drainage.
The reason we're here, Mike, is because you did this without coming in here first, okay? And you got that guy pissed off.
Good.
That's why we're here. That's why we're here.
Okay. Do you wanna hear why he, he built, he did it?
No, we don't.
I think we've, we've, yeah.
From the pool house, you know, part of it?
Mike, Mike, good. Mike, enough. Um, I don't think anybody here has any problem with relying on our experts.
He's being controlled by, by-
Well, it's, we inspected it again to make sure it was done right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it.
The other thing is, we have in our approval that we have covenants that make sure that no water goes off this property.
That's all we need is to make sure that the neighbor doesn't come back to us and tell us he promised us no water.
And if he does, and if he does-
We'll fix it.
We have a, I don't expect that.
The applicant is aware of the code and the business.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm like, this doesn't make any-
Alright, so, I'm gonna need a motion to hold this over until June sixth in anticipation of a decision.
Make a motion.
One favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nobleetti.
So, the next application is-
Go through without a permit, next line.
Number sixteen, M and T Peoples United Bank, one forty-four Sunset Avenue. Thank you.
My name's Mike Hyman, one eighty South Cliff Avenue, Rochester, New York. And, uh, I'm a senior construction manager with M and T Bank. And I'm here tonight to, uh, ask for a waiver. I'm hoping you all have a packet with the picture of what we wanna do. Just not let you know I've got some extra ones here.
We need one. Yep.
Just a little background. Uh, back on April first, the federal government has, uh, approved the acquisition of the Peoples United Bank, or M and T Bank. And, uh, in doing so, obviously, we're going to take and try to, um, you know, change signage, which we're in the midst of now, and all the ATMs. And one of the issues that we have at this site is the ATM kiosk. There are several things going on here. And I'm hoping you can see that the, uh, the, the big blue structure here. Uh, there are two things. One, the structure itself is in poor shape. And number two, the new ATMs won't fit inside the structure. So, we've gotta obviously do something a little bit better. Uh, on the next page, there, very deep within the thing, you'll see kind of a, um, a rendering, like the architectural thing. This is our, um, this is basically, uh, structures that we've been putting up all over the East Coast. It's our standard. Uh, you'll see that it's a small ATM, uh, what we call in a doghouse just because it's a small structure. Has the security equipment that's up in top of the, uh, the thing. And then there's just a, uh, canopy that goes over top. And then on the last page, uh, we, we just, we show some examples of some of these that are out in the field now. Absolutely, yeah.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this, uh, they're obviously the M and T Peoples United acquired, so they have to change their branding over. It was, I was kind of on the fence, but it, it seemed different looking enough and since it's on a prominent street, I figured we'd do a waiver site plan. Um, but, you know, the kiosks there, the ATMs, you have no problem. They're sealed or colored.
You have none?
No. I, I feel bad that the gentleman came from Rochester.
Rochester. That's okay. Listen, yeah, I gotta tell you guys, this was a lot of excitement tonight.
Come on, Ron.
It's, yeah, it's eight hours. It's eight hours here. But I have some other stuff going on over in Bridgeport, so I cheated today and jumped on the ferry to come across to get here in time. I'm, and I hate to say it, but I'm hoping to get back over to get on the ferry yet tonight to go the other way because I don't wanna go down through the city and around.
You're going out, Ron.
I don't have any problem with, does anybody have any comments? I'm looking green and blue. So, I, I need a motion to accept the waiver of the site plan. Okay? One favor.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you know what? I think I'm coming back down with the ladies, so these beans are great. You guys are very professional. Thank you. Appreciate it. You did. You simply did it.
Okay, thanks.
I wish I'd have known you were, had to catch a ferry. We'd brought you up soon.
Nah, that's alright. It was well worth it. Thanks again.
Well worth it. I just need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn? Make a motion.